Madam Mayor, we don't have any work sessions specifically listed, but you have two items on your consent agenda for action. One is the drought contingency plan and the water conservation plan. And we wanted to be sure that you had an opportunity to ask us any questions about that during the work session. And Larry Hoover has one slight change in what we'd originally posted to that one of those plans. And Darrell Westbrook, you'll wave Darrell in the back, stand up. Darrell is the Assistant Director of Water Utilities for the City of Arlington, who drafted essentially this plan so that it's compatible with what we're doing with Arlington. And both of them are here to answer any questions if you have them. If not, Darrell probably won't stay for the regular meeting when it's on your agenda for action. So with that, I'd like to ask Larry to...
Yes, on page six of your... On the water conservation plan under ordinances, it listed the 2006 international plumbing code. That is actually, you've adopted previously in 2016 to 2015 international plumbing code. We made that change, and we'll make sure that's presented as it moves forward to the state and before it's adopted in your code of ordinances. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
So essentially, the only change is the reference to the 2006 plumbing code has been changed to the 2015 plumbing code.
That is correct.
And I'm sure that the council members and all of the staff have read every word of these two plans. They're very exciting, but if we can answer any questions, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, do we have any questions? No? Chris?
No.
Well, I appreciate Darrell, you coming out and being here with us tonight. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Okay? So that seems to be all we have on the work session. Do we have any question about anything else on the agenda? Lovely. Okay, we will recess and start regular session at 7:00?
(inaudible)
Two minutes.
It was important work.
Everybody's here except for Josh, make sure he has that. Invocation, did you have anything to say?
I just figured Pastor Adams would...
Okay, Josh, I was going to give the invocation. And Jeff, could you do our pledges after?
Sure. Father, we're grateful for the hope and the position that we have in Christ tonight. Thank you, Lord, for this council. I pray that you be with them, encourage their hearts, strengthen them, give them wisdom. Our city staff, all the employees, our first responders, Father, I pray that you would just continue to be and provide their needs. Thank you for the city, and I pray you bless it, and just help us to be good citizens, that we might be additions to the group of men detract from it. Thank you for all its arts and currents, and we pray you sing in Christ's name, in the Spirit, amen.
Amen.
American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, isn't it a citizen forum? I'll call a fellow because I think she's got some very important information that's important to all of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thelma Kobach, 200 Valley Lane. Mayor Johnson, city council members, Mr. Campbell and city staff, I come before you tonight to deliver what is essentially a call to action. From July to October of last year, I had the opportunity to work for the U.S. Census Bureau verifying addresses and living quarters locations in preparation for the 2020 decennial census. My work took me all over North Texas, Eastern Oklahoma, and Southeastern Kansas. As I traveled around those areas, I had the opportunity to see wonderful examples of communities that had used their 2010 census data to drive their growth and their city visions. Residents, community leaders and staff, business leaders, and other entities were eagerly anticipating continuing those efforts with data from the 2020 decennial census. Many of those communities were already hard at work, spreading the word to their residents and encouraging them to respond to the 2020 census that was just around the corner. Imagine my disappointment when I returned home and discovered that such was not the case in my own hometown. As recently as yesterday evening, I was unable to find any mention of the 2020 census on our city's website. I cannot stress to you how important it is that we encourage every Kenneadel resident to respond to the 2020 census questionnaire. Through my research, I have learned that in the 2010 census, Kenneadel was severely under-reported. We cannot allow that to happen again. Accurate census data will help us determine the best direction for our city vision. It drives growth. It qualifies us for federal support for initiatives. And it can justify decisions such as zoning and use of city funds even when such decisions are unpopular. We have an awesome resource in the person of Bernadine Carter-Heron, the partnership specialist assigned to Kenneadel. I know that Bernadine has visited the city offices on several occasions and has shared a number of resources with the city. Bernadine is here tonight, she's right back there, and I believe she's brought some information to share with you also. In closing, I would like to pose two questions and issue a challenge. First, when can Kenneadel residents expect to see information about the 2020 census posted on the city website? Second, now that the water billing seems to be straightening out, when can Kenneadel residents expect to see informational flyers about the 2020 census in their water bills for the first time? And by the way, that should happen more than once. And here's my challenge. I challenge everyone involved in city leadership and all city staff to spread the word about the importance of responding to the 2020 census in all interactions with residents, businesses, and entities such as the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club, and others. Let's make sure that every Kenneadel resident is encouraged to respond to the 2020 census. Thank you.
Thank you, Count Thelma, for those important words. We've been talking at the county level, you're right. It means money for Kenneadel, it means a lot of stuff for Kenneadel, and we need to have that out there. Thank you. Are you going to give me some good census data?
I am going to give you some good census data. And I would like to thank Ms. Thelma for her beautiful introduction of the data information. In 2010, Kenneadel was undercounted by over 200,000 residents. You didn't...
Did you say 200,000?
That's what they say.
Yeah, because we only have 8,000.
I know you have 8,000.
I'll take 200,000, though.
But you can get to 200,000 with the $657 billion in allocation for the United States. You can get to 200,000 if we can get your roads, your children, the poverty level increase. We can get to 200,000 because Kenneadel undercounted 1% of their under-five count. That's children under five for their free lunch program. It was not counted. The residents, your hard-to-count area, I brought all this information for you guys in nice little packets. But my challenge is, I have come to the office several times, and I couldn't get a meeting with anyone, and I e-billed, left information. All I want to do is give a presentation on why is it beneficial for you to participate, to have it on your website. We have jobs between $18 and $22.50. We need 5,000 people. And it's very simple. This year, the liminal census is easy. You can do it on your phone, you can do it online, it's in 59 different languages. We got everybody. Also, you can do it by paper, English and Spanish. So my urge for you is to be counting. We want to count everybody once in the right place. And I have my business cards, I have information, brought y'all some calendars so y'all don't forget. And to let y'all know that the mail-out will start mid-March. April 1 is our official date for, and you can respond from April 1 to July 31st. But we'll have people knocking on your doors mid-May. We have online access this time, it's the first time, we're very excited at the census. It's the first time in history, 24 years since 1790, that we're actually doing it online. And we can have streaming data, trying to stay on track. Because I appreciate y'all's time and having me speak. Thank you.
Well, I did work for the census a long time ago. I did a census, I was a census counter a long time ago when I needed money. But here's my cellphone number, just give me a call or text me, and we'll get together.
The 1800 census?
Not the 1800 census.
1790.
Wait. No, not the 1790.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ow, I'm just leaving. Joe Palmer.
Well, I'm not here to promise 200,000 rooftops, but good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. A couple of brief comments at the beginning of the meeting. First of all, I was looking through your agenda packet, and it's not a huge deal, but I don't know if your logo is supposed to be upside down. The title page for the water conservation plan is upside down. Thankfully, there's nothing in the actual water plans offered by the City of Kenneadel that is also upside down. That would be terrible.
That would be terrible.
That would be terrible. Speaking of accuracy, accuracy in our reports that we put on the website, I know accuracy is important to everybody on here, and that's why I've come to talk to you on behalf of myself primarily. As we go into what we anticipate to be an election cycle that could be contested, accuracy in the information that we put forward is important. And I would ask you, I would strongly encourage you to consider that and adopt that as a policy of yourself personally. You know, if you can't get somebody's address right, and if you're making assertions about the membership of an organization when you have no possible way to know what that membership is made up of, then, you know, how can you be taken seriously? I want you to be taken seriously by your own constituents. I want you to be taken seriously. So there's an opportunity tonight, starting tonight, starting now, going forward for dialogue. My organization, Cabo, truly wants the city to do well. We want businesses to flourish because businesses represent and can represent a larger part of the tax base than they do now. Every dollar that the businesses can pay to contribute to the tax base takes a dollar of burden off of the property owners, the residential property owners. Don't strangle the businesses, let the businesses prosper. You know, a hockey team has a Wayne Gretzky, has a superstar. Basketball team has a Michael Jordan. Wayne Gretzky's job is to sell jerseys, score points, win games. But hockey teams also have goons. And these guys go out there, and they don't care about their career or their legacy. They just go out there and, you know, maim the opponent and cause personal injury in some cases. They don't attack the Wayne Gretzkes. You guys are not goons. You guys are superstars. So don't cross the line. Just be a superstar and be the face of the mechanism or the face of the machine. Thank you.
Oh, and I would just say that I do a live Q and A, I'm doing one tomorrow, Wednesday. Please tune in and ask questions. And last but not least, I think I have Bob Willoughby.
Hello, my name is Willoughby. I don't live here, as obviously, but about six years ago, I got involved in my local government. Like, 97% of my population doesn't know anything about the local government. It was shocking to find out, and I was same way, brain dead. I had brown hair too, before I got involved. So what I've done since I've been involved, and I'm at my city council lot, very much involved there, I decided to go to three different councils, White Settlement, Forest Hill, and here. It took me a while to get this, and I kind of did it my own, been the last five months since I got three of these, because I've been doing other things, just kind of, but the night was free, almost forgot, jumped out of a chair and said, hey, I'm going down here tonight. I got a question. I put forward to all the councils in my council, and I just want to do a comparison kind of like, and it's concerning co-compliance. When I found out that co-compliance has an ordinance that allows them to write you a citation with zero notice for nuisance ordinances, I thought that was a bit much. We were on the point that we had a 10-day notice, but that wasn't true. My city council won't tell me different, but anyway, I found zero notice. Also, you can get citated again every 24 hours for the same one, same violation every 24 hours. I'm pretty sure it applies here. If it don't, please let me know. If it don't, I'd love to know if it don't. But what I've asked my council several times was that, well, when I first asked them, I said, can we move that to a 10-day notice instead of zero, I mean, well, let me get that off the track here. I went to argument their council, because I thought we had a 10-day notice. Instead of a person working six days a week, you're only allowing them one day to address the issue. Why not move it to a 30-day, give them four days, less stress, you know, these are nuisance notices, okay? Also, if you live inside of an HOA, you get a 30-day notice for these same things. 30 days there, zero outside, and every 24 hours. My question to this council, do you think that's a double standard? Do you think that's fair? Or do you think everybody should be treated the same when it comes to laws, that we all get a 30-day notice, the same as an HOA does? And that's my question, to see how y'all respond. The same thing I asked White Settlement, I asked Forest Hill, and I ask here. And the funnest thing about these smaller cities, no offense to smaller, you got to wait to the end of the night to speak at hours, you know? I mean, you sit there for hours here. It took me by surprise when I went to White Settlement, because they called me so quick, I thought I was going to get to watch a little bit of someone else's council, but anyway. I appreciate your time and your effort, and that's what I'm asking, if you want to answer, don't answer whatever, but that's my question, if you understood them.
Couple questions. How did you pick the three cities that you picked outside of Fort Worth? Why White Settlement?
It's a good question. I wish I knew. I just kind of did it at random. I decided to do White Settlement. I just want to kind of bounce it around and try to get a rough, kind of a survey, you know? You know, kind of, I thought Forest Hill, and then here, you know, and Kenneadel, right here. I just, I don't know why I picked these three, but I just, out of random, really, and I just felt like these three, just see what, whatever y'all say, whatever I get from these three, you know, I felt that's a pretty good survey to go by, I think. And also, I've learned something too. If I, I've lived in my area for 50 years. If I do move to a city, I know I'm going to go check out the district and the city council and the mayor before I move there. And I want to move to a smaller city. God, where I live, it's terrible.
Well, and one of the things we do for the, having the visitors form at the beginning is because we know your time is important, and having to sit for three hours of meetings, we'd rather be able to let you speak beforehand. And if you want to stay for the meeting, then you can stay.
I appreciate it so much. Hours sometimes, I just want to go down, I mean, it's gotten so bad, really. I don't want to, you know, sit here, but I mean, it's really gotten bad at hours. The lack of respect for people, we have a lot of people, sometimes we have some big crowds down there, but it doesn't do any good, you know? Our city council is just kind of, you know, you know what's missing more and all in our city council? Simply moral values. That's a simple, honesty and more. When your councilor won't answer a question, and your mayor, they shut down a meeting before they'll answer a question. Betsy Pries ran out of the room, reached out my question, she asked three, they had to shut down a meeting, or some people got mad. I pushed my way in to get a question to her, and she wouldn't take it, but MC jumped in, that's all the questions you could take, and they shut it down. And that's what I'm living with, where you can't answer, no responses.
Well, let me ask you, let me see if George can give you a response on what the timeframe is when we do a violation. We can find out right now.
(inaudible) on the sheet, and you can answer your own from the throne.
And I'll write something to you and explain, and obviously, I think part of the answer is it depends on what the violation is, but what's allowed in the code is not necessarily what we do in practice, because we can often provide moral attitude and work with violators to try to give them time. Our preference is to get voluntary compliance rather than enforcement of code problems.
The point of the question was, HOA gets 30 days, I get zero. Now, I live in my area, a lot of people down the street have...
Well, she may have another answer for you too.
We don't have any policy whatsoever as it relates to distinguishing between an HOA or whether you're in one or out of one. We don't even look at that. We, as a practice, always give a notice to, on a violation, to the property owner before any citation is issued. If there's communication with the property owner and they're working with us, we will work with them as long as there's progress to, you know, not issue a citation. So our goal is to not issue citations, but to get compliance, and we work pretty hard at doing that. So we never go out on the first round and issue a citation.
Well, that's all of the Citizens and Citizen Forum. So let's go to reports and announcements, update from the city council. Josh? No, not here. Chris?
Nothing, you mayor. I guess I would maybe just mention to encourage folks, we have the community dinners that the person I met at the church every Thursday night at 6:30. And if you're interested in sponsoring a meal, you can reach out to Lori Sanders. She can help you get in touch with the right people.
Sandra?
Well, I was able to attend the Women's March on Sunday. On Friday, MLK banquet, and on Sunday was my 37th anniversary, so that is a big deal. Never thought I'd be married that long, so. But that is about it.
Chad?
Kind of scary to think that we're talking about back before Christmas, when we talk about a month now. I'm sad Christmas is over. Just kind of going into it, got to meet with some people, actually talked to a couple of companies that are looking at Kenneadel for bringing some businesses over. So that's kind of a nice thing, is we're starting to get the word out to our business community that Kenneadel is here, we've got some great resources. And then got to take a vacation, that was nice.
A cool vacation, I might have.
It was really cool. We got to drive in Walt Disney's limousine down Main Street, so...
Weren't you the grand marshal?
We were the grand marshals for the parade on New Year's Day, so that was, that was awesome.
Linda?
I got to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting this last month, and the mayor's State of the City address, and that was very good, for those of you that were able to attend that. I'm sure that that is filmed somewhere, maybe the mayor working on it, okay. And then also, I'd like to wish the YAC well, because they attend the summit coming up, the annual summit in February in Call, Texas. So I would kind of like to see the YAC maybe attend our next meeting, or the one after their summit, to give us a briefing if possible. That's all.
I got nothing. City manager?
Mayor, only two things. First of all, I'd like to express appreciation to our speakers about the census, and we will work, I know the city staff, several staff members and I will be discussing what we can do from our end as a city and perhaps get in touch with you, but very important message that you brought this evening, and I appreciate that. Also, I want to remind council that we do have an employee appreciation or awards dinner coming up on February 7th, I believe it is, so I think you've gotten a notice of that. And I'll remind you, we look forward to at least recognizing our employees as we can once a year in that way. So that's all, Mayor.
Financial reports from the city, any questions for our finance director?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have included the financial reports for December 31st, 2019. Basically, the summary page on page one gives you all the information that you need to know about all of our major funds. We're on track with budget. We know as of December 31st, we're at about 25% into the fiscal year. So three months have passed at this point, and we would expect to be at about 25% of expenditures and revenue. As you can see on the summary page, we're on track in each category with the major funds. The only thing to kind of highlight, highlight is on general fund revenue, we're at 45%. So of course, our major revenue source in that fund is property tax collection, and with those being due in January, we would be higher than normal in the fiscal year. So we will see that level off. We won't see those big jumps up and down, up again. We'll gradually get up to the 90s percentage-wise in general fund revenue, but just something to point out, that's why we're at 45% so far. On general fund expenditures, we are at 21.5% at 25% into the fiscal year. We would like to see more savings. We know that we budget to end the general fund fund balance at 7.94%, which is not enough. We would like to get up to 15% of fund balance in the general fund, and so what's going to get us there is just additional savings in the general fund. And if there are any other questions I can answer about any of the major funds, I'd be happy to do that.
It seems to me with the 15, if we can hit that 15%, we might recover back up to our 25 by end of the next fiscal year. That's certainly a possibility.
It's possible. We would love to see that, but we will have to have a real significant savings this year. This first year will mean a lot. So we budget it, you know, to look conservative, you know, 7.94%. No one's happy about that, but more savings is what we need. Our revenue at this point, it is what it is. Due to some recent regulations, we're going to see some slight actual decreases on some of our revenue, the franchise fees. The last Senate bill passed that kind of hurt us, so we may be looking at about 25% less than what we normally get in franchise fees. That won't help the revenue side. So for year one, which is, year one is a recovery year for us. We really need to focus on savings.
And where are we making up these savings?
I think the biggest thing right now that we've been able to do is look at personnel. When we, when we have a vacancy, we've been holding off on posting those vacancies. Personnel is about 70% of expenditures in the general fund, so that makes a difference. And it sometimes creates a hardship to have those vacancies, but that's where we're seeing, you know, recovery at this point.
And to me, it illustrates really, you know, I know I saw the video, I think, Richard, you'd posted, and some other people did as well, on taxpayer-funded lobbying. One of the issues that we face is that AT&amp;T has a slew of lobbyists, and they want to reduce those franchise fees. So at some point, we have to be down there saying, we don't want to reduce those franchise fees, because it's an impact on us. I mean, you can argue the efficacy of that, but for a lot of us, we don't have time to go down there and make those arguments.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know we, you know, cities argued it and fought it for a long time, but, you know, with Senate bill two, we didn't win. It didn't go in our favor this time. So with us knowing that, you know, we need to look at savings.
Well, in the long run, it looks like the franchise fees are going to continue to go down as we go to more wireless, and they're not going to be using those ground lines and paying that money to us in the first place.
Absolutely.
And that's going to be difficult. The only thing that gets me is the legislature, they pay taxpayer lobbyists in Washington, but that's okay for them.
Yep.
But not for us.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Schedule of investment activity for the quarter?
Mayor, we don't have any significant updates there. We basically just included the cash report across all funds and all cash balances as of December 31st, which was quarter four for 2019. So unless there's any questions about that, those are included in your packet.
Any questions? Well, I appreciate the work you're doing. It's concise, straightforward, and easy for somebody like me to understand.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Next up, the consent agenda. These are considered, little or no deliberation, are considered routine. Does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? If no, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with two corrections to the December 17th regular meeting. Corrections being on page two, under visitor forum, the name Nancy Neal should read Linda Neal. And then also on page two, under reports, council member Linda Rhodes, where it says KPFFA, that just needs to be struck.
All right. I have a motion with those amendments. Do I have a second? Second. Since no further discussion, please enter your vote. Since no further discussion, please enter your vote. All right, so that goes on to individual consideration. Consider authorizing city manager entered into a contract with SafeBuild for provision of building inspection services. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa Daly will present this item briefly, and information is in your staff report as well.
Thank you. As you're, I think you're aware, our, excuse me, our building inspector did resign, and so over the past few weeks, we've been working with a company called SafeBuild to do our inspections in particular, and then some of our plan review. And so that has been going very well. We asked them for a proposal to, you know, to kind of determine what the cost would be, compared that to our fee schedule, but that's the next item, so these kind of go hand in hand. But what we've determined is that those fees and the services they provide really work well for what we need. Over the last few weeks, it's been going very well, very smoothly, and we are recommending entering into a contract with SafeBuild. It's a 12-month contract with an option to renew with a 30-day notice if we don't want to renew the contract. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives here from SafeBuild if you have any, if you'd like to ask them any questions as well.
Sandra, any questions?
Yeah. Since they're coming in taking Sandra Johnson's place, doing what she would do correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Sandra Johnson, they're coming in to replace her, right?
Yes.
Okay. How much does she make a year in her salary?
Danielle's not here. I want to say it was about 68 was her salary with benefits. I think it was 90-something, but I'd have to, we'd have to check on the exact number.
I think that's roughly correct, but I don't know.
It was in the 90s and with benefits and everything.
Okay, so, and Maggie Hill is getting ready to start building in March, possibly? Close to that? So if we're going off the rate that we have here, that would be pretty close to about $67,000, I believe. Then we have the hotel coming in. I'm just going off of about possibly saving money, trying to, so how much more do you think with this company will we be spending over what we was paying Sandra Johnson?
I believe with the fee schedule, and that's why I said they're kind of paired together, that we will save money from what we're spending now. We, we looked at the fee schedule, we've been needing to do this for quite some time. Our fees have been low for a long time, lower than other cities, lower than our costs. So that goes hand in hand. We looked at their fees, and we looked at our fees as it related to, and it is very much an apples-to-apples approach, so an inspection costs this, a plan review costs that. So we're able to do an apples-to-apples approach on that. So we went through our fee schedule, compared the two. Some of our fees were okay, but most of them were on the low end. So we are proposing raising them to cover the expenses somewhat. It's not, we don't feel it's a big raise in the prices, but also to ensure that the permits are, the fees pay for themselves, so that taxpayers aren't subsidizing plan review and permitting for projects.
Bottom line, Sandra, is with the combination of the fee schedule and the contract, we anticipate that the burden on the general fund is going to be less, but we're looking at it holistically, because we think right now, we're upside down. We're paying engineers, for instance, much more to do plan reviews than we're collecting in fees, and these two things combined should cure that problem for us and make it easier on the general fund budget.
And just to give you a little idea on the process, it's not just SafeBuild. So for example, we have a planner that does all plan review for accessory buildings, fences, and signs, so those things never go to SafeBuild. Those are done in-house.
Is that Megan?
That's Megan. And she also does the initial plan review, so looking at spatial issues, zoning, and all of that. So all of their, all they're looking at is just the vertical buildings and the inspections for those.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
No, sir.
Chad? Linda?
So, well, this may be the next item. It has to do with the fees. What comparisons did you use for the fees on that?
We looked at surrounding cities. We, Megan did most of the work on this, but we look at Fort Worth, Arlington, Grand Prairie, and Mansfield, I think, were the ones we looked at.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Lee Swain with SafeBuild.
Good evening.
Any questions for him? No, all right, well, that was pretty easy. You have anything you want to say?
I just wanted to mention one thing. I mean, SafeBuild's a brief company history. It's been around for 30 years, started in Loveland, Colorado. We have over 28 staff members here in Texas, so we have the resources. And with, working with Melissa, a lot of the growth that y'all have coming, it would take more than one in-house inspector, and we have those resources to be able to handle the planner view and inspection workload day to day. I've been a building inspector for 26 years, have Mike Doty here also with SafeBuild. He's one of the operations managers, and it's a, we're going to give our very best effort to do our very best job for the City of Kennebelle.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I entertain a motion on considering authorizing the city manager entered into a contract with SafeBuild for provision of building inspection services.
I move that we authorize the city manager to enter in the contract with SafeBuild.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? Any questions, discussions on this issue? If not, please enter your vote. All right, item two, consider adoption of the ordinance of 690, amending the Kennebelle Municipal Code by amending Exhibit A, scheduled fees of Section 2-3, fees for licenses, inspections, permits, et cetera, to adjust minimum permitting inspection fees.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, we did go through, we looked at other cities first, and then we also looked at SafeBuild's fees and what we were charging. Like I said, it was fairly easy to do an apples-to-apples look at what they're charging, because they charge, rather than us paying a salary, they charge per inspection or per plan review. So most of the changes, we changed the minimum fee from 55, and that's a minimum fee for any permit, to 90, which is more in line with other cities. There's sort of a minimum amount of work that we have to do regardless of what kind of permit it is. The exception from that, of course, would be garage sales, which are, I think they're $10. So that would still, that would remain the same. And then the other change was to the building permits for commercial. So this page two, that list in red, those are the commercial building permit rates. So we changed those, the numbers on those by about 10% on the larger tier of numbers. And then there were some others that we just tried to simplify and create a flat rate because of new state laws that don't allow us to charge by valuation on anything residential, which is what we had before the state law took effect. We had kind of a quirky way of calculating things by square footage, because we had to shift to that, so even things like a fence was by square footage, which is really hard to calculate that way. So some of those, we just put a flat fee. I think we did $90 on a fence, memory search, and did a flat fee on accessory buildings. So wherever we could make it simpler and just put a flat fee on the residential, we did that. So that's, and you'll see a lot of $90, and that just reflects the minimum fee.
How often cities adjust their fee schedule?
I don't know the answer to that.
Some cities, Mayor, and it's probably a wise practice, is to try to do that and review them annually as we're doing the budget. City of Kennebelle has not adjusted all of their fees. We've been doing it a little bit piecemeal and still have a few more to bring to you as we go down the road and try to make our revenues equal our cost of doing some things. But doing a good thorough review annually, or at least every couple of years, is, I think, a recommended practice.
And we haven't done that?
No.
It hasn't happened since I've been here. I've been here a year and a half. I don't actually know when the last time it was changed.
It hasn't been done across the board and reviewing all fees since I've been here three years.
Any questions?
I have one. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
On page six, where it talks about water rate, well, water deposits and that type of thing, since we're looking at the fee schedule here, what about looking in the future for the potential apartments or where there's multiple units? I know that that's been brought up before by residents.
I mean, that's utilities, so that would probably involve, well, our utilities department also Arlington, I imagine. We just looked at our department, so there's, there may be other departments in here that we didn't do a wholesale look at all departments. We just did ours for this one, but that.
Linda, I think we can clearly take a look at what you're suggesting. I know that we're having discussions with Arlington now about making sure all of our policies with regard to water and sewer utilities are compatible with the City of Arlington. It makes administration of those much easier, and we will look at it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, where does this bring Kennebelle in with the pricing of the surrounding cities?
I mean, generally speaking, we're sort of in the middle. We didn't want to be on the low end, and we didn't want to be at the top. So we try, we were striving to be kind of in the middle and still cover our costs.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll call up Joe Palmer, who signed up to speak.
So I'll run off the bat, I'll just cite something that was referenced by the city planner. The city planner cites the smallest increase on the non-residential schedule. If you look at page two of eight, I'm going to go down to that schedule. Before, you had from $1 to $500 for 23 bucks. That category is gone, and it's been replaced to $1 to $10,000. So we're going from $23.50 to $120. So if you wanted to build something under $500, that's a, if you go from $500 to $2,000, that's an increase of five times, 500% increase from $23.50 to $120. Okay, so that percentage wasn't mentioned, only the 10%, only the pinprick is mentioned. I would encourage you to go through here and look at some of these increases, and I would also highlight that it's really backwards for you to vote on the contract that's going to bind you to these rates, and then vote on the rates. It's no wonder the city is in such a state of affairs right now. You should have voted on the amounts, agreed on what the amounts to be charged were going to be, and then decide whether or not you're going to let somebody come in and do this for these amounts. Everything 50, there was one thing she said that was accurate. Everything that's $55 is going to be raised to $90. Everybody coming in to pay $55 is now going to pay $90. And Councilmember Lee, I would just highlight that your question was not answered. You asked specifically, how much are we going to save? And the answer was, we are going to save. Members of the council are elected by the people. You represent the people of the city. You're supposed to ask questions. You're supposed to look closely at these documents, and you don't have to vote yes on the whole thing. Is there anything in here that you're not okay with? Is there any fee increase that you're not just right at home, peachy keen with? Everything $55 is going to go to $90. Swimming pool, hot tub in ground, $200 and $400. That's up from, it just says varies here. 85 cents a square foot for a detached garage. Is this going to save money, or is this in relation to the statements made by, in the finance report, that you're going to experience a shortfall this year? So you're trying to make up for it by gouging people who come in here for a permit? The Texas State Constitution says that all free governments are founded for the benefit of the people. Are you benefiting the people by gouging them and nickel-and-diming them to death? And your question, Representative Councilmember Wondell, where does this put us? About in the middle? Is that a scientific answer? Is that a precise answer? Are you happy with that answer? I would like to, maybe you are, it's fine, but you know, you could delve a little bit more into that. Where are we in relation to cities of similar size? You don't have to get rich off these people.
Now, hold on a second, Joe. Yeah, there may be some questions for you, because if you're doing this, this thing, they have a chance to ask you questions. They can't in the Citizens Forum, but they can here. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Palmer? Chris?
No, sir. I have the report if you'd like to read it.
Linda?
I get the reports as well. Thank you.
Chad? So you, I have a question. You have a statement about the financial situation we are in. Why do you think we're in this financial situation?
You obviously have a statement that you would like to make. You don't have to ask a question in order to reflect.
No, I'm just asking you the question. I need to know your opinion.
You have a statement that you're obviously wanting to make.
No, I'm not going to make a statement. I just want to ask you a question. Okay, so much for transparency. Let's move on.
I'm not going to.
No, but you don't even live here. Moving on, we are going to go to item number...
What are you going to vote on that?
Three. What's that? Oh, we need to take action. Do I have a motion?
We need to focus on business and security.
We need you just to be quiet while you've not signed up. Thank you. Go ahead. If I don't have a motion, I'm going to consider the motion has died.
I move that we approve the fee schedule as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to point out that all of last year, we only had two commercial permits that would fall in this fee schedule, and both of them were over the $10,000 mark. Just data matters.
Chris, Sandra, any questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Please enter your vote. 3-1. All right. Next up, approval of ordinance 691, insurance, the insurance issuance of sale and delivery approximately 1.255 in principal amount of the City of Kennebelle, general obligation refunding bond, Series 2020. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, at our December council meeting, we brought forth an opportunity to essentially do a refunding of some 2010 certificates of obligation from the city's EDC debt. We let council know what this refunding opportunity would do for the EDC debt, significantly reducing it. It wouldn't necessarily have any, relieve any burden of the general fund, but we are looking at reducing expenditures and saving anywhere we can. And so these type of opportunities don't present themselves very often. In our last council meeting, we had direction to move forward and have our financial advisors to put this opportunity out in the market, and since then, we were able to get some, some really good bids on this debt and come up with savings that is, surpasses what we thought it would be initially. We released it, and SAMCO Capital came back with several bids. They are here this evening to make a recommendation on the debt, and we have presented you with ordinance 691 that would authorize the issuing, issuance of a refunding bond. That would be a 2020 GO, a refunding bond, which would essentially refinance the 2010 certificates of obligation for the EDC. So if there are any questions for me, we have a PowerPoint presentation that's going to be given by our financial advisors and Andrew. Here to see what that...
Thank you very much. Andrew.
And Andrew, what that refunding would look like, and also what the savings would be for the city over the period of years.
Thank you very much. Andrew Frieden with Samco Capital Markets. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. As Ms. Sutton pointed out, you all have previously given staff, your bond counsel, financial advisor, agreed like to move forward with soliciting for bids for these refunding bonds. We received those bids today at noon, and you should have in your agenda packet a short presentation, the first page of which is the number, the bid result, the number of bids we received. We received six bids, the best of which came from J.P. Morgan Chase here in Dallas, at an interest rate of 1.93%. That was much better than we were anticipating. I think if we brought this to you all back in December, not being sure where interest rates would be going after the holidays, we could serve it, Lee estimated it to be around 2.37%. And so we're generating more savings than what we previously showed to you all by getting such a good bid. The page behind that is a summary of this refunding. And so that top box, and I don't know if there's a way to put that up on the floor for folks to see, but I don't have any, hold on to that, shows, as Ms. Sutton pointed out, we're refunding the COs 2010. Those are supported by the Economic Development Corporation, your sales taxes. So the benefit of this refunding will be to the EDC, not the city. They've been paying the 2010 COs since 2010. They will receive the economic benefit of this refinancing. And so the bonds, the certificates that we're refunding have an interest rate of 5%. We're refunding them with bonds at 1.93%. The difference in between those interest rates generates your savings.
She's got to hit the toggle, she's got to hit the toggle switch here.
So, very top box, the summary of the bonds to be refunded, the CS 2010, at an interest rate of 5%. If you do nothing, you would bank 5% on those bonds until they finally mature in 2030. We received the best bid of 1.93%. So if you look at the box to the bottom left, projected annual savings, with your acceptance of this bid tonight, that will turn into the actual annual savings. But you can see, if you do nothing, prior debt service to those 2010 certificates of obligation, that's the annual debt service on those obligations from now until they mature in 2030. The column to the right of that is the debt service for the new general obligation refunding bonds that would take their place. It's going from about $154,000 a year to roughly $138,000 a year. That generates somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000 a year in savings in each of the next 10 years, cumulative, that's $164,000, change, net of all costs. It will flow back to the benefit of the Economic Development Corporation. The box to the right, the summary of those refunding results, shows the preliminary that we showed you back in December. We were estimating we'd get interest rates around 2.35%. We were thinking that, that would, at that interest rate, generate $124,000 in savings. Today, you're locking in that interest rate, generate $164,000 in the savings. The bonds are currently callable. There's really no reason to not proceed with this, other than believing that interest rates will go even lower into the future. The bonds are currently callable, so we're not paying these sort of penalties to take them from the investor. It's our recommendation that you report with the refunding. It's a signal action I'd report to the city. I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you may have, but that is the extent of my recommendation.
Any questions, Chris?
I want to start by...
Sandra?
No.
Linda? No, okay, thank you. Then I'll bring up Joe Palmer, who wants to speak on the bond issue.
Obviously in favor. It's changing 5% to 1.93%. I'm here to briefly, very briefly, offer another alternative. This is the city helping the EDC, including EDC's debt. The EDC has listed properties that it owns. I would hesitate to think that people, once upon a time, would be enthusiastic about the creation of the EDC if you thought that 10 or 20 years in the future, the city would be, you know, bailing them out, so to speak. So I don't know if anybody on the council is aware of the listed properties that the EDC owns. Why not sell some of those properties? At least one of those properties has been owned by the EDC since 2006. If you bought a property in 2006 and sold it today, you think you could call yourself a winner? You think you could call that a good investment, especially if you're a taxing entity and you don't pay property taxes on that property? Or you can sell it, liquidate some of that stuff, and get the EDC out of debt that way. And that way, with the standard of course, can improve your, your debt rating, your credit rate, your debt rating. What do you think?
Any questions for Mr. Palmer? No? All right. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 691.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 691 as presented.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please enter your vote, or enter your vote either way, actually. Motion passes 4-0. There were no public, we've gone through all the public hearings. There was no executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, now everybody makes a motion. I'll take it from Sandra, second by Linda. All those in favor, just raise your hands. And we're adjourned.